For Dymick.
Here.
Kyle Gangler, here. Emily Damon, here. Nicole King, here. William Weiseth.
Here.
Stephen Wood.
Present.
Mary Jo Hyner, here. Priya Seri, here. Christopher Waya.
President.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
William Lestrosky.
Good morning, everybody. I'm not sure if you all remember me from last April. My name is Bill Lestrosky. I am a high school principal out at Brandywine Heights in Berks County, and I am the district safety director there as well. Back in my time in April, I spoke to the previous precedent before the COVID pandemic hit of allowing incoming students with IEPs to have access to your full-day kindergarten. I promised you that I would be coming back to speak to that in future meetings, and here I am. I have also brought with me a bunch of peer-reviewed articles from Eric, different things on here, the Northwest Comprehensive Center, excuse me, even the National Institutes of Health. I even have one in here. Full-day kindergarten is great for kids. Why isn't it required? Full-day kindergarten helps close the achievement gaps. This is from the early child development and care. So if you're a mathematician and a data person like myself, as I taught it for 15 years, it's all right here. I emailed a lot of you after that meeting, thanking you for allowing me to speak in my time here, which I appreciated. I appreciated those responses that I got back from those board members as well. When looking into moving into this community, you know, we have a great community here. And in my district, I have to look for needs and high needs of kids and their families, both in a security aspect and a familial aspect. And I can tell you, being a part of the Facebook community groups here and just talking to the individuals here, having a full-day kindergarten, regardless if the student has an IEP or not, is going to be beneficial for this school district, considering that we are one out of 14 without that in, you know, this Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit. It's a problem that has to be solved. I am willing to spend my extra time, non-paid by the district, to meet with anybody to help solve that problem. Looking at the statistics and the data measurements, it can be done. It can be done with the facilities that we have without the cutting of jobs. I've done this in other districts that I've been at, and I want to work with the community in getting this to happen. I know it doesn't, it may not be, you know, an important aspect, but we are in a time here. One of these studies alludes to the 1950s when they had half-day kindergarten as opposed to now. It's not the 1950s anymore. This is a study right here that I have from Clark County in 1988 showing the benefits of that. And I printed it on this extra goofy legal pad paper so it can be seen here to show the importance of it. I didn't do that as a mistake. Please don't mistake the way I'm speaking as arrogant. I'm very passionate about kids and inclusive childcare. I want all kids to have an opportunity. There is a high need of kids who don't come from a privileged background that could use the support and the services that I think that this district could provide and provide very, very well. So that is my reason for talking here tonight. I'm not expecting it to be voted on tonight. I will be at the October meeting, the November meeting, the December meeting, the January meeting, and so on and so forth until I see this through, because the people in the community have spoken to me. They know I have a loud voice, as you already can tell for the second time right here. But I want what's best for kids, and we have parents that need to work in an inflated time. We have parents that cannot watch their kids, and we need to have a good grip on this community and show that we care about it and we care about the upbringing. I'm going to be emailing everybody on the board, all of these, tomorrow. I'm going to leave these big copies here as well in my seat so you could have them and look at them after the meeting or what have you. Thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Tim, Karen.
I'll be very short. Today, I watched my child leave for her last first day this school year. I heard the enthusiasm in her voice, and our family just wants to say thanks to the staff here for that. Over the years, you've taught the academics, but your effects on her test scores capture only a fraction of your positive effect on her as a whole person. I know we educators sometimes have those pregame nerves the first day before the first bell. Even 34 years into teaching, I still had those nerves the first day. But now that that day one is done, I just want to say thanks again from my family and good luck to everyone this year.
Dr. Mann.
Thank you, Mrs. Reinhart. I am very excited to offer my report tonight. And we want to start with Mr. Dimick. We have, yes, I know, you are here, you are here. It is not attendance, not attendance. No, it's not attendance. I think you're going to walk home very happy tonight, all right? Because you are being honored by one of the state's most premier and prestigious agencies, the PSBA. That is correct, that is correct. Nothing but the best there. So we want to, we want to acknowledge, and in all seriousness, I say this in all seriousness, 16 years of board service that brought you through recessions and crises and pandemics and social discord and all of that. And, and I will tell you that the work that board members do, I say this all the time, is the most valuable because we can all volunteer at a soup kitchen or we can volunteer at the library or any number of places, and there is nothing controversial about that. But the board service you may have here, and after 16 years of it, makes profound impacts on children and communities. And in spite of the origin of this certificate, I do want to extend its spirit in congratulating you and thanking you for 16 years of service on the board. So, Mr. Dimick. And I do have a few other things to talk about. It was a very exciting day here, exciting week, weekend in Southernly High. After years of preparation, hard work by many, we finally had a first. And that is, you want, you think I'm going to say the stadium, but no, it was our reading program launched today, Wit and Wisdom. And so our teachers have been preparing so very hard, thanks to Dr. Trinkle and Dr. Solometto, who I think has a milestone day today. We won't say that in case people are watching. And, and so our teachers have worked so very hard, and they've prepared so very hard. And today, they get to show what they've been working for the first day of our reading program. I do also, I want to acknowledge Mr. Pepe and the facility staff, the board, and the community. We did also open a stadium on Friday. It was an enormous success. Our band was fantastic, our cheer, our dance team, our football team played a great game, exceeding expectations. And, and we hope that's the very first of a long, long series of community celebrations in that stadium. So it was, again, very, very exciting. Also, we started today by welcoming an extraordinary group of talented professionals to the district. We were able to attract an extraordinary group of people who are here teaching and administering in their first day on the job. And I also want to take the occasion to introduce Dr. Ethan Ake Little, who is our new HR director and who is joining us here at our first meeting. Welcome, Dr. Ake Little. It is good to have you, and we thank you for the work you've already done and the work that you'll certainly be doing in the future. And, Ms. Reinhart, that concludes my remarks. But I do want to thank everybody for this exciting day, and we look forward to many, many more, 179 more, to be precise.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back to Section 3 Minutes. We have an executive session somewhere, Mr. Solicitor.
Yes, Madam President. There's an executive session held on August 1st for purposes of discussing possible litigation. There's also an executive session this evening, August 28th, for purposes of personnel.
Can I have a motion to approve the board minutes of the 26th of June and the workshop minutes of August 14th?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? You weren't present for which?
Either one.
It was a good summer.
It was a good summer. Okay.
I meant to mention my super to the part, pardon me. I want to welcome Kevin Reed, who is filling in for Jess Moyer as our solicitor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reed.
No, it's my fault. I intended to introduce it.
For not recognizing you. Okay, those minutes are approved. With that, we have curriculum, student, staff services.
Yes, I have, thank you, Mrs. Reinhart. We wanted to provide more of an update for you regarding some curricular items. Last year, we spent a significant amount of time talking about wit and wisdom, the steps it took to take us to get to that curriculum selection. And through that process to that end, we also became aware of some misalignment with our K-3 report card. So through the spring into the summer, that work collaboratively took place with Dr. Solometto and some teachers as part of that process. And through that time, we came to some agreement on what the K-3 report card should look like based on the wit and wisdom curriculum. And she wanted to take, Dr. Solometto will take a few brief moments to, to walk you through some of those revisions before we get into some of the other actionable items we have on the list. Dr. Solometto.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Trinkle. And for the board, for giving me a few moments to go over some of the revisions that we have made to our K-3 report card. So Dr. Trinkle just alluded to it a bit. We, as a team, you may remember last spring, I was here and I was telling you that there was a group of us, administrators and teachers, instructional coach, that came together to look at some of the changes that would need to take place now that we were implementing this high-quality instructional material wit and wisdom. And one of the things that we quickly identified that would need to change would be our K-3 report card. Given that, if you look at what really a report card is supposed to do, it's supposed to be a reflection of the instruction and the assessment that students receive in the classroom. Well, now that we have wit and wisdom, the assessment and the instruction that students are receiving, it would have been very difficult for teachers to take that and translate it into the K-3 document that we once had. So that kind of opened up this whole idea that let's take a look at our K-3 report card document, and let's see what changes are necessary in order to make this a really functional and meaningful document for students and for teachers and for parents. So that was kind of the big idea behind why we took on this project last spring. The team and I spent a great deal of time last spring and over the summer making the necessary improvements. So what you see here are the changes that you would notice if you were to take the new report card documents in K-3 and compare them to the old. So I'll give you just kind of the highlights. You're going to notice that there are some additional skills in ELA and in math. While we were looking at ELA, we thought, let's also take a look at math. So we took on both of those content areas to better align with the curriculum as well as the state standards. So we took the skill language that was on the report card document, and we kind of lined it up to state standards, and we found a way to make the skill language more specific and closer to what the state standards say. We also wanted to infuse a little bit more consistency in that skill language from grade level to grade level and not have K and 1 and 2 and 3 kind of all sound so different. We wanted to also make sure that we had a consistent grade level key from grade level to grade level. So what you'll notice is that in the core academic areas, students are now being marked with a 3, 2, 1. In the special areas, there's a different key for that as there has been. But what's nice now is that from K to 3, it's always going to be that consistent 3, 2, 1 grading scale. Just some special things to note that, and this is similar to what it has been in the past, but if there is a quarter in which there is a skill that has not been formally assessed, that will be graded out. Doesn't mean that that skill isn't being taught. It just means that the skill hasn't been taught to a degree of mastery where the teacher has formally assessed that skill. If the skill is kind of in progress, you're going to be getting that X. And you'll see that usually right before, in the following quarter, there will be a number indicating how the student did when they were formally assessed with that skill. There may be times in which a student just has a blank white box. And more likely than not, the reason for that is because that student is receiving their instruction in that area in a special education setting, receiving replacement curriculum. And there will be a special comment that will appear indicating that. And so the things that are remaining the same, all of the comments are going to be remaining the same with the exception of that one that I just spoke to, and that will be in addition. So none of the comments are going away. That consistent parent-teacher communication that has always existed between teachers and the students' families throughout each quarter that is going to remain in place. And the special area, those skills and those marks, we did not change those at all. And so, thank you. We really, we worked hard on this. We're very much looking forward to putting out this new K-3 document and getting it into practice. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time. Yes?
I wonder if you could go into a little bit more detail on how and how long, why, and how the state standards were not congruent with our previous marking standards, if you will. Thanks.
I don't know that I can speak to the origin of some of those documents having not been here. I know some of those documents have been in use for quite a while. It's not that they were incongruous, I would say. It's just that they weren't nearly as specific, and there were skills that just kind of weren't present, things that weren't represented at all. And when we're looking now, now we have this high-quality resource that really does cover everything. We want to make sure that that report card document speaks to each of those things. So in some areas, it was, let's make sure we include this because it wasn't there before. In some areas, it was there, but it wasn't quite, the verbiage wasn't as specific as we would have liked it to have been to show its relationship to the state standards. Sure.
Thanks very much, Emily.
Hi.
Yeah, the specificity, as having been a parent of elementary kids, you very much want to know what's going on and look at that. So I know as a parent, specificity would help me be reassured and feel up to date on my kids. So thank you so much for doing this for a report card. The question I had when you were talking, I got a little confused and I was just curious. For those 3, 2, 1 marks, do those each have a rubric, not displayed on the report card, but do they each have a rubric for the instructors to follow so that everybody knows what a 3 is? And that's, okay, great.
Yeah, great question. That was one of the things, our instructional coach, our K-6 instructional coach, Kelly Katzbeck, worked very hard on that this summer, making sure that every assessment that teachers would be delivering, that there was a way for them to score that with a level of consistency, whether it be rubrics or whether it be scales. And all teachers received last week when they were here for their professional development, a little handbook that guides them through that.
Thank you so much. That's great, wonderful. Thank you. And then, did I hear you say that the typical pull-down comments will still exist to communicate on the report card between parents and teachers? Were there, I missed, were there additional pull-down comments commenting on particular new skills? Or will those simply be, okay, I was just...
No, with the idea in mind that next year, this is going to look different, you know, from a student information, you know, system standpoint. We didn't go too far into, you know, changing those things. We sort of thought, let's leave the comments as is, add that additional one that's necessary, but we didn't make big changes there.
Yeah, and I just want to say other great improvements are indicating when a box is blank, it's not blank, it's gray, or there's an X, or there's always an indicator so you know what, why that is, doesn't get a 1, 2, 3, it doesn't get an S, or it doesn't get, there's a specific, and that's wonderful to communicate. Thank you so much. As our curriculum gets better, our report cards get better and reflect skills. Thank you so much for doing that. It's a lot of hard work. Didn't have to happen, but improves the student experience. So thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Solometto. Thank you. Sorry.
Can we get a copy of what the possibilities are and/or what the report card looks like?
You got me before I got comfortable. So I came back up. Yes, so right now, what we're doing, working with Mr. Suma to get those changes in Sapphire so everything is formatted. So when we have that done, we can get you that. Still kind of working through those finalized formatting pieces. So absolutely, yes, soon.
Yeah, I'm more of the mind of, you know, K to 3, court, you know, I don't necessarily need to read about my kindergarten. I mean, I'm hoping it doesn't say things like, I don't know. I can't even put the words around it. But usually, the state comes up with ways of saying things that, actually, I don't find all that helpful. What I want to know about my kindergartner is, are they being kind to other people in the classroom? Are they attentive? Are they sort of be with it? You know, like, some of this, I think, is appropriate at a higher level. But what I'm hoping is that we haven't, you know, turned to K to 3, and I don't know because I haven't seen the document. But my hope is that gives a 3, 2, 1. So if I get a 2 and something that's awful, you know, kind of highbrow language about whatever that skill is. In my opinion, as a parent, I would want to have communicated to me something that's a little bit easier to understand and I think incorporates sort of just the broad ideas of what my child is doing at those lower levels. I hope we haven't lost that. I guess the comments are there. But I also asked at the time that we were looking at doing this that, you know, again, for that reason, I'd almost rather see two sentences written by a teacher that isn't a dropdown menu that tells me something about my child, you know, in total, that, you know, I think can communicate something in a report card better than maybe a dropdown menu and/or core curriculum. If this makes no sense, I'm not articulating it very well. But my point is, I'm afraid, what I don't want to see is, not everybody loves data like educators do, and data is important for educators. I'm not saying it's not, but it's not always the best way of communicating with a broad spectrum of parents. And so I hope we aren't losing that aspect of our report card. Would love for them to get them in their hands. I always thought that was a good thing as a kid. I'm being serious, you know? I mean, you get, you know, again, not K through, I mean, once you get up, but these lower levels, you know? It was kind of nice, you had these, and it had what it was in there, and it's kind of, I just like that old-school feel of things. And you could show it to your parents, and they could go through, and the kid could understand what's on the report card itself to some degree. You know, I'm not sure a two-year-old's going to understand that he or she got a 1 or a 2 in a certain particular core curriculum and what that means. That's my concern. I think, I think we have to make sure it communicates to a broad spectrum of people and can be understood and communicated from a parent to a child about what their expectations are and how they're doing. And I hope it does that, so I look forward to seeing it.
And we have other...
It's hard to promise jumping in on something. I don't want to be that guy.
No, we're not changing any other, other ways that we were communicating, like through CSOW and those types of things, which is a more kind of non-data-driven way we've been communicating with families through CSOW and through those other conferences and other just personal contact. We're not changing any of that at all. But there were some serious flaws in the K-3 report card that needed to be addressed prior to wit and wisdom. And we just took this occasion as a catalyst to act on those, to make things more consistent and which we think will be very helpful. But when we have that formalized, we can certainly share that.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, two more items under the curriculum and student services. We have a motion to approve the student-teacher affiliation agreement with Wilks. That is just a standard memorandum of understanding to have student teachers come here and work to pursue their teaching certification. If you don't mind, I'll take the other one that's underneath there. We also have a motion to approve the pricing for Southernly High School District Athletic Events for the 23-24 school year, and that is attached into the document. Do you want to keep going and cover... I certainly can, if you would like. I will move on to special education and student services. The first motion is to approve a provider agreement with Pediatric Services of America, which is Aviana Healthcare for the 23-24 school year. That is for our BCBA services, our behavior analyst services that we have throughout the district. It's an annual renewal. The second one is Beata Home Healthcare. You'll see two for Beata Home Healthcare. One agreement, which are both annual reviews of a contract. One is for general open coverage in the event we need coverage for nursing, whether that be in a health room or for a field trip, what have you, whatever the circumstances may arise. The other one is for a one-to-one nursing for a specific student need, which also requires board action. Bucks County Intermediate Unit 22 Special Education Services Agreement for the 23-24 school year. This allows us to partner with Bucks County in the event our local IU is not able to provide us with services for placement or there's not enough space available in a classroom. This allows us to partner with another IU. And the last attachment is the New Story Tuition Agreement. This is an agreement for a student placement for the 23-24 school year. Any questions about those items?
I just had a quick question in general. Maybe Lou may be the one to answer. But in some of those contracts, there's certificate of insurance or proof of insurance by either us or the other party. Are we normally listing or getting copies of that? Or we just assume it with the agreement? Just a broad question.
No, we actually make sure that we're listed as additionally insured on the certificate of insurance. That way, it does two things. It makes sure that we know that they actually have the coverage they're required to have and that we're additionally named.
Could I ask a question about the, not about the pricing per se on the ticketing for the, whatever that item is? I'm into the, looking at the Welcome to Southernly High Home of Spartans explanation here. And it says that, I had a question about no readmission without purchasing another ticket. I had thought in the past that readmission, you know, once someone left, they could not come into the stadium again in general. And is that a change in policy? Or does that somehow, my concern is that someone would read this posted and think, like a student would think, I can go out, check to see if my ride is here, and then come back in and maybe couldn't. Is that a policy change? Is that a policy change or is that just, it doesn't line up with what I thought was our handbook policy and I don't want a kid at the gate to misunderstand that this is a change. That was my only question.
I, I, I don't know the answer to your question, but I'm going to take a guess.
Okay.
Strictly as a practical matter.
Yes, marking hands and such.
That if someone goes out, they're not supposed to come back.
Right.
And now we don't really know who was there in the beginning. Like we don't have a list of who comes and who goes. And so once a person leaves, you cannot come back in. And then if you come back in and buy a ticket, well, that is your only means to reenter. It's not that we're giving you permission to do that, but that's the barrier that exists because we really wouldn't be able to enforce it otherwise. Because if a kid goes and buys a ticket or anyone goes and buys a ticket.
Right.
They could get back in.
Okay.
And so I think that's probably just a statement of the reality of how it works.
That was, that was my only question from a confusing standpoint. It would appear to a kid at the gate.
That's how I understand it too. I mean, there are some schools that don't allow readmission after a certain point.
Right.
And I think that's our, that's our iteration of that.
Yeah. So we're not encouraging, we don't, not trying to get too, you know-
Oh, I didn't think that for a second. My only concern, right, my only concern was if this looks like something that's going to be posted or advertised. For instance, I used to tell my kids, do not leave the stadium until like I am there and you see the whites of my eyes, that kind of a thing. And so if a kid sees this, it'll be like, well, I still have three bucks in my pocket. I can go back in if my, you know.
I think that's reasonable. Let's, let's see if that's even necessary. And if, if it's not necessary, we could scratch it.
I think no admission without ticket is self-explanatory without even mentioning readmission, and that way you don't have a confusing message perhaps? That's my-
Does this mean that we're now staffing until the end of the game? Because we've, we've not done that.
Yeah. Well, I, I think maybe administration, but probably not. But I think administration will be around and if they see that you left and then come back. But again, it's, it's very hard, you know, for someone not to be able to sneak back in. But if, if someone was causing maybe a little difficulty and administrator said, look, you have to go call your parent, then that might be the way to say, hey, look, you just can't. So we'll look at that language and if it, if it makes sense to strike it, we will.
I didn't, I didn't think there was any attempt to double charge or anything. I was just thinking about kids at the gate misinterpreting and that's all.
That's fair.
Thanks, thanks for looking into it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to approve all the items under five and six?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so those motions are approved. Technology?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay. And Mr. Pepe, can you cover business and finance, please, as well as support services?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. On the agenda tonight under business and finance, we have, starting with the bills list, and if you'll notice on the bills list, we have a number of bills because we're taking care of the summer. And you'll see at the top of the bills list, they have the annuities. That's the 403B, 457 plans from various payrolls, starting with 630 all the way up to 825. In total, that's $22,000. General bills, we have the quarterly payment for the Southern High Library, $17,850. We have some postage that went out for the bus cards, Apple and custom computer specialists. Again, part of the end of year purchasing that we're doing with technology. You'll notice that we have the bills list for July as well as two for August, and that's because we had the August 14th meeting and we had some bills that needed to be paid promptly. In aggregate, we're looking at 3.1 million, which is pretty consistent with where we are for an average month. It's about 1.3. We have a number of bills under the construction fund bills, and as Superintendent had talked about, we're very excited with the stadium, and since it is now built, we actually have to pay. So a lot of the people on there are Athletic Fields of America. They were primarily responsible for managing the entire project. You'll see Dewey Engineering on there. They were our professionals associated with the project at the intermediate school, which we are, again, ecstatic with how that came out. The Whitmer Group Restoration, they did all the brickwork. Southern Bleacher, that's the beautiful bleachers that we have out there. And EI Associates has been working with us queuing up our next big project, which is the high school air-conditioned HVAC project. So in total, on the construction funds, 3.1 million, and that's pretty much it. There's a lot of, you know, different people on the bills list. There's nothing that really jumps out too much. I think there was a question, there was a question that I actually fielded earlier from one of the board members, Ms. Gangware, and asked about SHI International Corporation and Integra One, and they're both IT-based outfits that we're partnering with through E-Rate. And Chris Suma, hats off to him, making sure that we're getting good deals in those areas. Moving on beyond the bills list, we have two board secretary's reports. We are up to date, June and July. I just call your attention to June because it also has the investment report. And as you see, we closed the year out up $742,000 in interest, which is remarkable. And we've really taken advantage of the market in that respect. Numbers in, in isolation really don't mean much, but when you consider we budgeted $375,000 for this year, we are plus 367. And that is certainly going to go towards helping us close out the books when the auditor comes and look at restoring some of the money in capital reserve that we've been spending on projects like the stadium project. In addition, we've moved into July. Everything's in order. And the next item is property tax refunds. The property tax refunds are actually pretty small at this point. Couple of them were like assessment and veterans. And outside of that, I don't have much left. In the cafeteria pricing list, which is standard every year, this year, you'll notice at the top, we have the breakfast program, which we had already moved to the forefront and determined as a district, we were going to provide breakfast, but the state decided to come back and make breakfast free for all students. So even though it's free, we still have to assign the value. So it's a $1.75 elementary, $1.75 mill in high school, adult 250, that's not covered by the state. So if any of the teachers want breakfast, we collect. And outside of that, if I don't have any questions on business, I'm going to move to the support. Support is a pretty big deal tonight because we have an amendment to the transportation agreement with Chrysler, and the amendment is twofold. Number one, we were able to negotiate a reduction in our mid-year bus runs by bringing the umbrella coverage into line inconsistent with all of the districts, moving down from 22 million to 9 million umbrella. So we have 1 million per occurrence, 2 million in aggregate, and an additional $9 million umbrella. And with that, we were able to share extensively in the premium savings that the contractor would get, and it's a win-win, but we're winning a little bit bigger. We also took advantage of the opportunity to secure the out years, which would have been year four and five at 4% and add an additional year at 4%. And that way we have stability in the next five years with our transportation. And one of the questions that came up with a new transporter is how, how do we determine that they're going to continue to run the route as well as the predecessor did? And the answer to that is a performance bond, which we also have as part of the terms and conditions of the contract, which we left in place. So that's what the first item is. Specialized transportation program, that just comes each year with our special needs students. We need to approve those. And the last item is sprinkler and fire protection services. And if you notice, one of the things that we are doing is if we're obtaining additional quotes, I want to start carrying that into the resolution so that the board, as well as the public, understands that we are still actively trying to get better quotes. Kissler O'Brien is currently who we have. We went out and checked the market anyway and got another quote from Keystone Fire Protection, but it was slightly higher. So we're going to continue this year with the renewal of Kissler O'Brien. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe. Can I have a motion to approve the items under Section 8 Business and Finance and Support Services, and Section 9 Support Services?
Still moved.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those motions are approved. And with that, we're going to move on to the HR report. I'm going to make a motion to table 10A B, Amendment to Agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that agreement and motion is tabled. And with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Ike Little. Did I get that correct?
Yep, yes, you did.
Okay, welcome. And he is going to present the remainder of the HR report.
Yes, so we start off with appointments. Certified staff, we have three new certified staff. They're all either have begun in the past week or one of them, which is our certified school nurse, is working out when she will be released to us. We have classified staff, which is our instructional assistants. We've also started putting extracurricular activities, especially for our fall sports, where we might have had a vacancy or two. Volunteer coaches are coming on board as well as mentors that we have. Starting this year, we will be mentoring, and you may see a couple of prorated ones. Under the Public School Code, we are actually required to mentor teachers' long-term substitutes with more than 45 days of assignment. And so as we've been reviewing that information, we've been implementing, especially for this year, into our induction project. For retirements, we have one, but it won't be until the end of the calendar year, right before the holidays, and that is our library media specialist who will be retiring after 26 years at the intermediate school. We have resignations, and those actually parallel in many ways the appointments. We have one that just came in, and actually we are beginning the search for that, but all of the other ones are filled or we are on our way to making an offer very quickly.
I have a quick question about that before you go on.
Sure.
The, and I was not at the last meeting, and I did, I did look at the agenda, and it looked like we hired a bunch of instructional assistants. And I see on this agenda, a bunch of resignations for instructional assistants. Were, are, was the last meeting hires to replace these resignations?
Yes.
We did replace those.
Yes, yes. So the resignations, they're effective, if you noticed, all on the same day, and that was today. Yes, so the, the replacements essentially started for today. And then we have our resignations for our certificated staff as well as our classified staff, to your point, where we've either, actually you'll notice that some of them were retroactive, they may have done it in the past month, or we just found out that they are, have been employed somewhere else.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the items in 10A, C, and D?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Those action items are approved. Do we have any committee reports? Well, we have a new facility.
We didn't have one since the last meeting.
I know, but we have a new facility. Okay.
People have seen the wonderful-
Okay.
Lou mentioned the brick, so.
Thank you, Facilities Committee, for your work on the stadium project. It's been a great year. Any new business or other business?
I have one, one note for new business, Mrs. Reynolds. As I noted in an update to the board, one of the, every, every other year, the state of Pennsylvania, specifically the Pennsylvania Youth, Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency suggests that public school districts do a survey of students, and that survey involves drug-related and violence-related issues. And we are suggesting, but we want to talk to the board about this first, participating in that survey, as does the majority of school districts. All right. Now, the information is not reported at a student level. It is valuable in that it gives school districts and policymakers, both at the local and statewide level, insight into student attitudes about very important issues such as drug and violence related to their own health, safety, and welfare. We would only give this survey with the affirmative permission of parents. So unless you sign a paper that says, I allow my child to participate in this, the child would not participate in this. That trick goes, start at sixth, seventh, eighth, or what's, what was the grade level, if you recall? Sixth? Right, secondary. And so I, I raise the issue, and, and if we were not to participate, there are some funding streams that would be negatively impacted, although not in an enormous way. Right? I raise it with the board because in the past, and not often, but occasionally it comes up that while some of these questions are intrusive with respect to students' attitudes about, about issues, and, and those questions are intrusive with respect to personal use of drugs and that, that type of thing. And while the, the survey is confidential and is not reported at the student level, those questions are being asked. And we would be clear in sending that out to the permission to parents so that, that is known. But before we move ahead, I thought it would be important for the board to be aware and offer your insight and thoughts on this, on this topic. So that I, yeah, that's kind of my, my question to the board, framing it, and I look forward to your, your insights.
So I, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and I, I would certainly, I think, be more supportive of the affirmation process of going to parents first. Would we be able to see an example of this survey? And would parents be given examples or, or the survey itself? Or is that something that, that we can do?
Yes, and we could send out the link to the community and certainly to the board that has more information, including, I think, I remember seeing some actual questions that, that are there.
I think, I think that would be most helpful for both me and hopefully for parents to-
Yeah, I will send that out.
...see examples of what kind of questions the state is asking.
Yes.
It's, it's sixth, eighth, tenth, and 12th. We are not opting into the optional fourth grade at this point. It's optional, so I think we're going to stick with the, the sixth, eighth, that 10th and 12th and not go beyond that.
And i- is it, is it just drugs and violence? Or is it, are there other potential intrusive questions?
Those are the-
Those are, I would say those are the umbrella topics.
Yeah, I, I would suspect though that there are a number of other, like for instance, comorbidities of drug use that may come up that would be asked about. So I, I would, I mean, it isn't intrusive, the questions are intrusive, no two ways about it.
I know you said that it was confidential, but does confidential also equate to completely anonymous per student? Like you won't know the student who responded to a certain survey?
That, that's typically how the results are shared, right? And it's typically shared to the superintendent, and that's it. Unless we choose to share it otherwise, which we would choose-
Right.
-make that distinction, we do not share the results.
Yeah. In, in the past, I've just gotten reports, never is a student name mentioned, and I think if there's not a certain number that respond, they don't even, they don't even tell you. So it's, you know, anytime a student fills out a card, there's a small danger. Anytime any of us fill out something, there's, there's that small danger. But I, I do believe the danger is very small for any particular student response to be tied back to that individual.
And, and what the results help us do then is better program for preventative measures for our students in our school community. When looking at that information helps us better define or design programs that better support the needs of our school, which is why it's beneficial. However, we would make the requirement that it is not a passive consent. Just because we didn't get a permission slip back doesn't mean you take it. We would actually, in the affirmative, require a yes in order to have the student complete the survey.
Can you comment on, on how that process occurs? So how would you, you know, if, if a, if a parent does not, you know, explicitly say no or does not fill it out?
And they don't take it.
Then they won't take it. Right.
No, we, there are some, and the, the example that, that they would use would be a passive consent. If we don't receive it, we can certainly create our own requirements for that. And we, I have in the past historically as well, required a written yes in order for the student to take it. Otherwise, that's not, that does not occur.
Yeah, some people, the default is yes if you don't get a no.
Right.
Here, we feel very strongly that the default is no unless we get a yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that. I'm, I concur with Dr. Wayack. Privacy is important, and system control in these sorts of things is critical as well. So to me, it sounds like you're putting those things as a priority, which that's the only way I think I would support it.
Yeah, I think it's the only way we would support it too. Because while the information is valuable, it, to ask kids the questions they ask is a serious thing, and we want parents to be involved.
I had a few more questions. Will the results, I heard you say the results go to the superintendent's office. Will those results be publicly shared? Or in this day and age, could they be forced to be publicly shared under a right-to-know request?
I don't know. I, I would, I would be, I, I have always taken highlights of the survey to try to oftentimes demonstrate the extent to which problems exist.
Okay, right.
Because they do. As far as releasing the full survey or right-to-know, I don't know what, how that would actually work, but, you know, to the extent that it was ruled that it's a right-to-know eligible, we would send it out. But knowing that there's no identifiable student information in that final report.
Right, right. And then that leads to my second question. Once we have determined the, this is convoluted, but I, I just have to ask the question. If, for instance, you break it down by sixth grade, eighth grade, 10th grade, and let's hypothetically say only 10 sixth graders returned an affirmative, it, it narrows it down quite a bit if you're looking. So would we then allow parents to know what percentage of sixth graders are going to be taking this so that you could assess the anonymity of your child within this block?
Yeah, I think it's built in to the survey where they, small numbers are not reported. And I don't know what the in-number, like in other words, if there's not a certain-
The threshold, right, okay.
If there's not a certain threshold, and again, I, it's been a while since I've looked closely at this, but if there's not a certain threshold that would allow for anonymity, then it would not be, make its way into the, into the report.
Okay. I, I can follow up. I'd be interested in what that threshold would be, especially considering, is it a percentage of school or is it a number? Because we're a relatively small school district, so that would be my only question. And then is the, I know you said there is a funding stream associated with this, and obviously students and kids come first, but my question, if we're going through all this anyway, is, is that funding stream based on percent of participation of our students?
No.
Or is it just whether or not you offer? Okay, thank you.
If you-
If you tried, then you get the funding.
You're okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I don't think we would ever be, you know, have our arm twisted because there's a few bucks attached to it.
No, 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 absolutely not, absolutely not. I was just curious, if we're going to be going through all this effort and having all the staff hours put into print these permission slips and survey, is it based off percentage of participation anyway? In which case, what's the value add there? But if it's just you tried, then maybe, you know? And do we have an idea of what the quantity of funding we're talking about in the first place? What's the dollar amount?
It's, it's an indirect through support, through external agencies like the Center for Humanistic Change and all of those agencies that come and-
You just wouldn't be able to access those.
Right. It would severely limit our options of what that agency provides, for example.
Okay.
It doesn't mean they go away, but it means they are very limited in what they can provide.
Well worth it then. I understand why trying makes sense here, yes.
And together, when the results are in, we will, you know, report them out, and we'll have a good conversation about its implications once that information comes here.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's good information to see, but it's not without its problems, which is why we, you know, need to disclose that and, and get your insight into it.
I don't know how, is there, you said there's a timeline for this? Is this something we need to vote yes or no on tonight, or is there, we can get more information about and vote at the next meeting?
No, I wasn't even going to have people vote.
Oh, okay, you were just informing us.
Well, and if the board said, look, that's a bad idea, Mike, we would say, like, we're not doing that, right? But, you know, hearing that, we'll approach it cautiously. That's the approach we're going to take, and we're going to move forward with that in mind.
And Bill, I know you want to, can I ask one?
Sure.
Thanks, appreciate it.
May as well do 20.
Exactly. While I'm on a roll, keep going. I was quiet until now. Could I ask, is it okay to ask the solicitor if you have any idea about that right-to-know information question that I asked?
No, I mean, the first.
He pulled towards you for the button. Here, use mine.
I got it. So, the first question is, does it become an official agency record? Okay. And then, are one of the exceptions applicable? So, in the first instance, we would have to analyze, how is this reported to the, to the board? What action, if any, does the board take? Does that confer it as an agency record? Because if it's not an agency record, it's not subject at all. So, that's the first thing. And we'd have to do that analysis. I can't tell you on this one today whether that would be. And then, there's a variety of exceptions with regards to privacy that could come into play. But from what I'm hearing here, there is a kind of an anonymous survey, so those exceptions may not be applicable. So, my, my first instinct is that there's probably not necessarily exceptions available, but the question will become, is it an agency record to begin with? If that's the threshold question.
Thanks, that's all I have.
And we don't, we don't vote on it, and we're not going to vote on it, and we're not going to present it to the board. But we may present a presentation that would soon be obviously right to know, available, the presentation that we do. So, that's kind of the approach that I've always taken on this, on this topic.
So, real simple question. This is not new, or is this new to the district?
No, this is.
Oh, I don't know about.
Because it's the first time I recall hearing about it, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Yeah. This has been going on since 1989, every other year, and I think that this district has participated.
I don't, I don't know how, how often it has, but the PACE survey is not new. I'm not sure how often.
I think the district has periodically participated in the.
Right. Which is maybe why it's.
And that was my assumption, but the awareness is appreciated. And I think the parents will appreciate the option of opting in or not opting in.
It'll be very explicit in that permission.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, that's my new business. Thank you, Mrs. Reinards.
Do we have any visitor comments? Okay, with that, we're adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you, everybody.